Good evening. Welcome to the February 10th, 2020 meeting of the Rutherford County Regional Planning Commission. If you will stand with us, please. I guess I'm the only one that's not. If you will stand with us, please. Commissioner Lee Vogel will lead us in our prayer and our pledge. Lee?
Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this evening that you bring us here together to discuss business. And we ask that you watch over the discussion and it be found positive and pleasing to you and to benefit all of Rutherford County. Dear Lord, we ask you to watch over our country at this time. There's a lot of things going on that we're having to deal with and find our way forward and work together. And just pray that you'll watch over us and guide us and give us direction in how we should go in that way. And dear Father, we ask you to watch over our military and our emergency services personnel as they take care of us each and every day, that you'll watch over and guide them and direct them and keep a watch after them, dear Lord. Again, I thank you for this time that we can come together and just watch over us as we go our separate ways this evening. In your Son Jesus' name, I pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You may be seated. Call or roll, please, Gail.
Charlotte P., Chip Penyon, Craig Lynch, David Jones, Jim Aberwater, Lee Vogel, Marvin Whitworth, Mike Kush, Pettis Reed, Rhonda Allen, Jeff Phillips.
President.
Eric Corum.
Thank you, Gail. This time, we need to approve the minutes for our October 14th, 2019 minutes. I'll call on our Vice Chair, Pettis Reed.
Mr. Chairman, I have read over those minutes, and I have found those to be okay. I move that they be approved and sent on to file.
We have a motion and a second to approve our October 14th meeting minutes. All those in favor of that motion to approve, please say aye. Is there any opposition? Motion to approve carries. We had no items withdrawn or deferred. It's a good thing because we've only got one item on our agenda for tonight, and that's under new business. These are items that are scheduled for public hearings and are rezoning request. Item 6A, 6AA, it looks like. Item REZ20-3003, Karzian Muhammad Ali. Location 3940 Shelbyville Pike. Commission District is 6. The Commissioner is Joe Frank Jernigan. Size of the site is approximately .87 acres. Tax map is 136. Existing zoning is commercial services. Proposed zoning is commercial general. Is the applicant present? If not, let's go on with this hearing. He may show up, so let's just go on with it. Doug?
Yes, sir. Thank you, and good evening, Commission members. As you stated, the applicant is asking to zone the property from commercial services to commercial general. The conversations we've had with the applicant, as well as their agenda materials that they've submitted, or application materials, I should say, that they've submitted that have been included with your agenda packets on your iPad indicate he would like to construct a motor vehicle sales use on the property. He has included a concept plan showing the general layout of the property. The existing building would be used for an office, with the remainder of the property being approved for motor vehicle display and sales. There is an existing septic system, at least the tank on the property. However, the field lines look like they actually... The concept plan that he supplied, actually, it looks like it's on adjacent property, but it looks like it actually goes across Oak Meadow Drive, Oakwood, excuse me, right there as Mike has on the screen before you. Not that that plays any, necessarily any role in the application for rezoning, just letting you know what we were able to find out with the materials that we had through the state. As I said, the tank is close to the building. Access to the property would remain along Shelbyville Pike. Any newer modified access points would need approval by TDOT because this is a state and federal highway, Shelbyville Pike. Landscaping, most of the property around this would be zoned commercial services, so they wouldn't have to do any buffering necessarily around the property. However, I will say that if there is a change in the uses of an existing building, structure, development, now this comes right out of the zoning ordinance, which requires rezoning of the property to allow the new use, which in this situation, commercial general would be the first use, first zone, excuse me, that would allow the use as a motor vehicle sales lot. So they would have to bring the entire building, structure, development, including the parking area. And you'll see in your agenda packets on the staff comments, I added a little bit of emphasis to that, highlighted and bolded it. They will have to comply with the requirements of this section. So in other words, they're going to have to redo the parking area, bring up the landscape standards, et cetera. Now, again, buffering wouldn't be required just because of the surrounding uses already being commercial, but they would have to go ahead and at least improve the parking area there he wants to have for the vehicle sales and whatnot. So they would also have to abide by the performance standards as far as noise, dust, et cetera, that currently apply to this building as well, being that it is zoned commercially. This property has been used in the past for a restaurant bar. It is located on an urban-style corridor according to the county's comprehensive plan. The traffic count, most recent was 2018 that we see online on TDOT's website. It carries over 35,000 vehicles per day. Commercial general zoning is located across Shelbyville Pike, about 420 feet from the subject property to the south, I believe. And there is a similar use located at that spot. So, all that being said, and the fact that the matter of, the size of the lot's going to limit, to a large extent, how many cars and things they can actually get out there with the landscaping and whatnot. But with that, they're asking basically go from one commercial zone to a more intense commercial zone. So with that, we'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions for staff? Any calls? Doug?
I may have received one phone call about this, and I may be dreaming that. Honestly, I don't remember. But it was a call, if I did get a call about it, it was really just informational. It wasn't, nobody had called me and expressed any concerns about this.
I have a question. Doug, will you pull back up, or Mike, pull back at an image? It looks like the lower part of that lot is lower than the front. Is that right? Is that, it looks like it's significant difference in the elevation there.
There's a little bit of a retaining wall on one side and a pretty significant ramp down to the back. And that's solid rock. I don't believe that's asphalt or anything like that.
I guess I'm just trying to figure out the functionality of the space as it's laid out and how that's going to work. Has the applicant talked through with you what their plan is for the layout?
Well, I mean, beyond what's on the concept plan that's in your agenda packets, not really. Of course, you know, you can see on the concept plan toward the end of your, on your iPads there, he is showing mostly parking area current and future either to the side of the building between it and, what is that, Oakview? And then to the back of the property, he's showing a little bit more back in that area. Now, of course, again, that's going to be limited by, you know, how much landscaping and different things he's going to have to provide. So, but that's pretty much what you're seeing there is pretty much what's, what he's proposing to do.
Okay, so I guess what I was trying to figure out is, when you say parking, current and future, I think customer parking. So if the customer parking's going to be along the front, then where's the, where the cars are going to be that are going to make you want to stop and do business with them? If it's the business cars that are for sale that are going to be in the front, then how are the customers going to know where to park?
Well, and he'll have to do a site plan showing us how he's going to lay out the parking out, and we're going to have him show designated areas for customer parking. And the zoning ordinance does have regulations as far as how many spaces he's going to have to provide as far as customer parking goes. Now, there are regulations as well in commercial areas as far as vehicle display and what he'll have to do there. So those are, they're dictated in the ordinance, so those will have to be demonstrated on the site plan, how those will be differentiated.
And if I might add, a car carrier unloading, how is that going to unload? A lot of times, they'll just park on the shoulder and unload. Most likely, that's not going to happen.
Well, you mean, in reality, it will happen?
Well, if we can, if we can have them show us on the front end how they're going to make that happen on a site plan, we can hold them to it.
I'm going to expand on Rhonda's comments a little bit. First of all, how, refresh my memory, how do you determine how many customer spaces would be required for a business like this?
I've got my zoning ordinance here. Let me just pull up the parking requirement.
Because I'm with Rhonda. You know, when I'm zooming by here at 70 miles an hour, how am I going to be able to pick out the used Ferrari in the back that I may want to slam on my brakes and take a look at? I won't be able to see it. Everything's in the back, because I'm assuming the building, as it stands, is going to stay, right? They're not, they're not changing the building.
Right. They would, they would have to, they would want to occupy the existing building. Vehicular craft and related equipment, as defined in our ordinance, this is what is car sales, would be one space for each 500 square feet of gross floor area. So we would take the gross floor area of that building, divide that by 500, that would be the required parking you would have to have on that. Now, of course, you'll have to also provide ADA parking, you know, handicap parking and whatnot. So that's, I would anticipate that probably being closer to the building as opposed to in the back, but again, he would have to demonstrate that on a site plan for us to...
So this is 1,500, let's just pick a number. If this is a 1,500-square-foot building, how many, do the math?
Three. You'd have three spaces.
Three parking places would be dedicated, and one of those would have to be handicapped.
Correct.
Got three spaces up front for customers. You've got employee parking. Can you, can you switch to that other picture that shows the parking lot from the 180-degree? That's, that one's okay. That's okay. All right. So basically, those four cars, or those five spots represent customer and perhaps employee parking. So to the right there, is that just grass area right there?
Hmm.
All right, so you, your only potential show area for cars is in the back, and I don't see how you're going to get a tractor-trailer in there. This just is, this makes zero sense to me for a used car lot. So I'm going to shut up and listen.
Back to the comments about how many, you go with a square foot of the building to see how, okay.
That's correct.
I'm sure there's some size of a building. I mean, he could put a phone booth in there and have one car lot. There's going to be some, he's got to have, the building's got to be so big, we'd want it so, can't be a real, real, real small building, can it?
Well, as far as the size of the actual building, is that what you're asking about? Yeah, I mean, that's, as long as it meets building code, and Ms. Bell could probably be in a better position to answer that than I am, but, I mean, as far as the building itself, as long as it meets commercial building code for that type of occupancy, I don't know if there's a minimum size.
Well, to have a car lot, when you see all the car lots, I mean, they got the car lot covered up with every inch of it's going to have a car on it for sale. So therefore, the smaller the building, the more room he has for, to show cars.
Inventory.
Versus having parking for customers. That's what I was going to ask.
Right. And again, you know, even if this is approved, he's going to have to submit an engineered plan showing the parking area. We're dealing with that right now on one on 231, a little further down the road. There was one that went through the rezoning process last year, and we're working through the process of a site plan with them right now. We've already met with their design engineer. They haven't submitted anything yet, but we anticipate that coming sooner rather than later.
Yeah, that's going to be the same problem with the truck.
Right. And that was some of the discussion we had, is where is the differentiation between where the customer parking is going to be versus where display area is going to be? You know, we've asked them to really highlight that on the plan, so we have a good idea as to what we're, what we're looking at. Another point to remember is that, I mean, this is the use that the applicant has stated he would like to do. Now, commercial general, of course, allows for a lot of other different type uses in there. And again, the same holds true for them. Whatever use comes in, they're going to have to show us that the site can function with that use via site plan, because they are going to have to improve the area. So again, even if this is approved, the zoning, it's not being specifically approved for the used, or motor vehicle sales, I should say. Regardless, even if that's what he says his intent is, you know, we can't hold them to that.
I must, must say that while I agree that the site, if I were looking for a site for, for a car lot that needed visibility, this is probably not a good choice. However, on the other hand, I don't know that it's within our purview or right to determine whether something makes good marketing sense. We can only look at it based on the facts and leave it up to them to design it in a way that, that makes it function for, functional and safe. So I don't know that I would consider the fact that it's a car lot or any other, in any other thing in my decision, just as commercial general adequate or proper for this, this location.
Before we get too further, let's get into our public hearing. Any other questions for staff before we do that? This time, I'll declare the public hearing open for item REZ20-3003 for Karzian Muhammad Ali. Anyone wishing to speak on this rezoning request, please come forward. Seeing none, I'll declare the public hearing closed. We're back open for business. It's been our custom, most of the time, to defer if the applicant's not available, but we don't have to do that. There's a lot of times when the applicant is not in town and can't make it, so we've made exceptions to that. So I'll, we will leave it up to this commission as to what your preference is.
Doug, the car haulers that will bring the cars in to unload the cars, okay, that's the biggest problem is guys having a place to do that. Now, south of that piece of property, there's a long drive right there that doesn't belong to him, does it?
No, sir. You can see the map that Mike has up there, that blue outline.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, you're talking that area right in there. Yeah, that's all.
You see a lot of things parked, you see a lot of things parked right there.
Right.
That's where he will unload. That's where, I mean, it just makes sense, if he can, if his neighbors will let him or whatever that is.
Well, right, and I think part of what we would want to require there, because that's all, as you can see that, that's all wide open down in there as far as access. If you go in the driveway, I mean, there's a defined drive right there, but then between the two properties, there's really no barrier or separation between those two. You know, personally, I'd like to see some sort of a barrier introduced there. You know, again, seeing a site plan showing some of that being taken up, replace it with some perimeter landscaping, things like that. You know, I can't say that that won't, you know, just completely eliminate it, but at least, you know, there won't be a way to get from cars from there to there that might help to, you know, dissuade somebody from doing something like that.
Yeah. He needs that piece of property.
Doug, if this is approved and the plan comes in that's not practical for the car lot in your site plan review, the zoning will stay with the property?
That's correct.
Car lot?
Right. Not until they could submit a plan to us that would demonstrate functionality, as far as we're concerned.
And it could be another type of business.
Yes, sir. It could. That's right.
Now, coming back to us.
Correct. Now, again, depending on the improvements they make, it might require site plan review, but if it's just parking and whatnot, that might not rise to the level of having to come back to the planning commission. But if they wanted to say they wanted to tear the building down and start over from scratch, then something like that would come back before you.
The existing zoning is commercial, but it's commercial services. So it's just a different type of zoning. Could you give us just an example of the differences between the two, Doug, if you would?
Yes, sir. Let me zoom over to my ordinance here. Just give me, just give me a second. All right. Okay.
Did you say you did have a discussion with this gentleman about where you're going to unload, where the car haulers are going to park?
I don't think we really got that far with the discussion, but he knew he was going to have to, this wasn't the only step. I mean, because we told him there would have to be improvements made, so.
I think that's key to approving this, to find out.
All right, just some differences between commercial general and commercial services. As far as residential uses, there is no difference. They're not permitted in either zone. Let's see. Community education would be allowed in commercial services, but not in commercial general. Extensive impact facilities are allowed by special exception in the commercial general zone, but not in the commercial services. Healthcare facilities are allowed in commercial general, not in commercial services. When it regards to the commercial uses, really the differences you're talking about, let's see, well, okay, now again, I'm going to preface this by saying this site wouldn't meet these requirements. Anyway, adult entertainment would be allowed by special exception only in commercial general, but not commercial services. Automotive parking, like if we're just a parking lot, would be allowed by special exception in commercial services, or commercial general, excuse me. You'll recall last, a few months ago, we considered one on Manchester Highway, the corner of Manchester Highway and Gum Road, and that had to go also through the border zoning appeals. Let's see, everything there's the same. Vehicular craft, related equipment sales, again, what we're talking about tonight's allowed in commercial general, not commercial services. No industrial uses are allowed. That's pretty much, there's not a whole lot of difference between them. There's, there's a few things here and there, but that's pretty much it, just to give you just a quick overview.
The restaurant that was approved there, is it still operational?
I don't believe so.
Or the restaurant bars? This is, has a history. It's been before this commission, over the last 20 years, a number of times when it's changed. And those of you that have been around town, especially on Memorial, you notice that there's a couple of car lots that doesn't look like they're big enough for car lots, but they've got a bunch of cars on them. And whether the marketing is right for this or not, I have no idea, but it doesn't seem like it would be a good place to put a car lot. You're absolutely, positively right, but I'm not sure that, as Jim said, that that's a decision that we should make. So we can do one of two things, one of three things. We can approve it, we can deny it, or we can defer it. And once again, we've got a history of deferring as it relates to the applicant not being available for us to ask questions for. So balls in your court, do whatever you felt led to do.
I go back, I go back again. He's got to prove to you that he's going to unload the cars on, on that piece of property, right?
Yes. I mean, well, part of a site plan for this, we would ask for a truck-turning template to demonstrate that they could get a vehicle, 18-wheel or whatever it is they want to use on this property to unload cars and then be able to pull back out on the 231 without having to actually back out onto the road. And that's something that we do, I mean, fairly frequently with not just these kind of uses, but with, I mean, several different site plans and things that we've seen.
That's good that you'll get the template for that, because a lot of times with these used car lots, they're hauling in with one-ton duallys, hauling maybe two or three vehicles on what would be a gooseneck trailer. So that would be easier than the, I went straight to the semi that's hauling 10 or 12 vehicles, and that may not be the case. So I kind of agree with Jim that we should give them the opportunity to see if they can make the site work for them. I'm okay, I'm not making a motion or anything at this time. I just, I wanted to state that I'm for them.
You might not be, but you came real closely.
But, but one concern, and I want to talk about that at the site plan, is being an auto lot, I'm concerned about the frontage road and the property line, because if we'll, if we don't watch, that could be an easy place to all of a sudden have vehicles on the right-of-way. And I think we're all aware of that. But that simulates a frontage road, and it's a perfect place to line about 20 vehicles up for viewing.
And we would just have...
And that's site plan, that's site plan time.
Right, and you know, just telling the applicant, "Look, I know this is going to be really tempting to do this, but you just simply can't do it." And if we go out there and we see that there are cars being parked along the right-of-way or adjacent property, it's like, "Look, it's not zoned for that. You can't park it in the right-of-way, and you can't do this other property over here." So neither one's going to work, you have to move those, and just be done with it.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
May I just interject real quick on the conversation? So just remember, Commissioners, that you are approving not the particular use here. So you're not approving a car lot. You're approving the classification of the parcel itself, right? If it's whether it's going to be commercial services or commercial general. And there's a slate of other uses that it could be. So I'm not so sure that you can tie any sort of denial to the possible or speculative inability for it not to function as a car lot. Now, once it gets to the point, assuming that you were to approve this and they brought a car lot to Doug, that's obviously going to require improvements. I think what Doug is saying is because it's going to require improvements and to make it work, it's going to have to go through site plan, and that's where this commission would see this again and be able to pick this apart like you're doing now. And if it turns out that from a functional perspective, a safety perspective, a welfare perspective, that this simply can't work, they're probably going to have to change what they're going to use the property for, and they'll, they'll still be able to use it for a commercial general use if this board and the county commission were to rezone that, but they simply might not be able to use it for the car lot for functionality purposes. But that's not something that you're dealing with here today.
That's why I'm glad you gave us the list of what it can and can't be, because that's, like you always say, you're saying no to something or yes to something. So that gives me something to ponder there is what the possible uses could be and how we would handle that.
So Doug, I'm going to throw some what ifs. What if we zone this, approved the commercial general, and what if this fellow comes back as a car lot, and the only way to make it happen to get a loading zone is a lease on the front of that property next door? Would that be acceptable? Not that I'm trying to get any justification, but I guess my concern would be what happens when either that lease runs out or it's not a valid long-term lease, and then suddenly that loading dock disappears? And this may be a premature conversation and more suited for site plan, but it kind of weighs into my thinking tonight.
Yeah, to answer your question, and I think I can't answer it tonight, my take on that would be, this is probably similar to what we see in situations where there's a shared parking arrangement between properties. This is, in my mind, very similar to that. And there are regulations in the ordinance that do spell out that in order to share the parking, the use has to be an allowable use in the zone where that parking is going to be, or in this case, that loading is going to be located. In this situation, that adjacent property is zoned commercial services, which would not allow the use. So if they were to come in and say, "Well, I'm going to lease a portion of this property in order for me to dump my cars out and then bring them over to my site," I would say, "You can't do that, it's not zoned for that." So they would have to either figure something else out, or they would have to bring another property in for rezoning. And of course, just because you rezoned one doesn't necessarily mean you rezoned the other. So, you know, our advice to the applicant at that point would be, you need to make this work somehow onsite. And the option of using that other just as a lease, as it currently stands, is just not really an option at all.
So what if the property next door was zoned commercial general and they brought a lease in? Then we would have to consider that. And then my concern would be, what if the lease was not enforced, and then suddenly that loading area disappeared? Would we have any ability to go back and say, "Hey, you lost your zoning area, your your unloading area, now you're in violation of your approval?" Or, I mean, do we have any teeth for something like that?
Right, well, and I go back to that. Let me see if I can't pull that section up I was just talking about. Bear with me just a second here. I wasn't anticipating looking at that, so I got to, I know about where it is, I just got to find it. So, let's see. So let's see.
While Doug is finding that, I don't know how many cars, used cars, I could get on this lot. And once again, we're speculating, and maybe we shouldn't be, but what's to prevent them from parking down the road a mile and an employee transferring the cars to the parking lot? You know, there's kind of all sorts of ways to get around that in all probability. And who knows? You know, they may haul nothing in, but those type of transports that only haul two or three cars. So it would be a lot easier for that than it would an 18-wheeler. So maybe we're getting out there a little too far and trying to figure out what he's going to do on the site plan.
This is in section, I believe it's 1102 of the zoning ordinance, talks about off-street parking requirements. Says off-street parking spaces accessory to any permitted use may be located on a zone lot, which would be a property, other than the same zone lot, provided that such spaces are not located within a residential agricultural district unless the use is permitted in such districts, which of course, it wouldn't be in this situation. There is no way to arrange such spaces on the same zone lot as such use. The spaces are located, draw a minimum... okay, this is the one I was looking for. Such spaces are in the same ownership as the use to which they are accessory, and necessary instruments are executed to ensure the required number of spaces remain available throughout the life of such use, or such spaces are covered by a lease agreement. So we would want a copy of that lease agreement to find out. But to answer your question, if the lease agreement ran out, I think they would have to either figure out another option on that lease, maybe a new lease, renew it, do whatever, or they would have to come up with something new on the site. I don't think we could... they could say, "Well, we lost our lease. I guess we'll just start using the road." They would have to demonstrate at that point that they can still handle whatever they need to do onsite. So does that answer your question?
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to go ahead and make a motion to defer this ruling tonight without more information. I do think it's in the best interest that whatever goes there, just from a safety perspective, having come off that hill several times, that I'd prefer it to be more of a low-volume type entity that ends up there versus something that has a lot of traffic going in and out on a daily basis just because of the nature of 231 South coming up and down through there. But without the applicant here and knowing more details and understanding, I'll go ahead and make a motion to defer tonight this ruling, please.
Motion to defer and a second from Marvin. I think the motion to defer is common practice for us when the applicant is not here for us to hear him. So I think that's an appropriate motion. Any other discussion or questions on the motion?
Before you go, I will say that when the applicant... we had... there's always on the application form, there's always something that they fill out, that the initial understanding that if they're not here, there's a good chance it's going to be deferred. And, I mean, the applicant was aware of the meetings, so I'm not really sure what happened, so...
Any other questions? We have a motion and a second to defer. All those in favor of the motion to defer, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? The motion to defer carries. Thank you. Our next planning commission meeting is scheduled for 9:00 a.m. That's on the 24th of this month, and it'll be in the mess in the planning building. Doug, you have anything?
I just have a... just a brief update. It's only taking about a half hour to get through it, so... okay, I thought it was funny. I do that every time, and I keep thinking someone's going to laugh about it, but that's only usually me. Same reaction I get at home, so... The... at the last meeting, I believe there was a request made, Mr. Kush, I believe it was by you regarding the traffic sheds, about looking into that again. I've been in contact with Mr. Steve Talknell. I do believe we are going to be able to have something at the 24th prior to that meeting. So we'll send out a little something reminding you of that. We'll do a 7:30 meeting on that date. It's probably going to... we're going to talk with our OIT folks about the possibility of him actually doing like a remoting-in kind of a thing, like Adobe Connect, something like that, where he can go through that. He does have some local connections here that might be at the meeting as well, but we're working through that right now. But just keep your eye... just keep your eye open for that. But it looks like we're going to be able to work something out for the 24th. So I just wanted to let you know about that. So that's pretty much all I had, Mike, unless you had anything.
FYI, this is a request that's coming from the full county commission for us to take an additional look at this as we're looking at alternatives to property taxes and other sources of revenue. And infrastructure's a big, big part of that. So the county commission, through the Public Works Committee, has asked this commission to take another look at traffic sheds or something similar to traffic sheds to give us additional options as we go forward. And it's a reasonable request, and we'll be taking a look at that. So thank you, Doug, for being on top of that. Anything else? If not, thank you for your attendance. We are adjourned.